All right, we're calling this meeting to order on February 14th, 2017. City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Holland.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Harless.
Present.
Commissioner Holland, do you mind leading us in the invocation?
Sure.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day, a day in which we celebrate love and those around us. Please give us wisdom to serve the people of this community as we go through this meeting.
She'll stay standing also. We have Addie Rogers here from Paducah High School. She's a sophomore. She's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Addie, for being here. City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Abraham, you have a motion for the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for February 7th, 2017, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Need a second.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
We have several appointments to boards and commissions tonight. Commissioner Holland has the first motion.
You'll read the first part.
Just kidding. I'll read that.
I have it.
You read the second part.
I read the first part, everyone. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Andrew Wiggins as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission to replace Robert Cross, who has resigned. This term will expire February 14th, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Harless in appointing Andrew Wiggins as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
Next up is the Commissioner of Waterworks. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Roger Truitt as a member of the Commissioners of Waterworks. This term will expire January 6th, 2021.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Harless in reappointing Roger Truitt as a member of the Commissioners of Waterworks.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
And the last is Paducah Board of Adjustment. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Ari Jurji as a member of the Board of Adjustment to replace Nancy Duff, whose term has expired. This term will expire August 31st, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Harless in appointing Ari Jurji as a member of the Board of Adjustments.
I second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
And again, thank you to everyone who serves on these boards and commissions as volunteers. This is a lot of work, so thank you, guys. All right, moving on to the motions for the RNF documents. Commissioner Holland?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, number one, assistant agreement with the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for water system improvements. Number two, city of Paducah financial report for period ending December 31st, 2016. Bids for engineering public works, concrete ready mix 2017 through 2018, number one, cotter ready mix, number two, federal materials. 2017 through 2018, equipment rental, number one, central paving, number two, Danny Copensons, number three, harbor construction. 2017 through 2018, pavement marking contract, number one, Bram Stripping Company.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
Okay, moving into municipal orders. Commissioner Wilson?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Manager, any questions on the personnel? Thank you.
Thank you so much. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an encroachment agreement between the City of Paducah and Muslman's Properties LLC for an encroachment along the eastern right-of-way of LaBelle Avenue located adjacent to Muslman's property at 3121 Broadway for continued use of an existing concrete platform and construction of new stairs be adopted.
Good evening, Mayor.
Second.
Oh, second.
This particular encroachment is some exciting things we have. I mean, for example, with the new businesses that are going in where the old Coke plant was, if you're driving down LaBelle Avenue, you've always seen a loading dock that was part of the old Coke building. It was encroaching on the right-of-way. And then also, as a result of the new business going inside, they had to have an exit that provided for steps, and it's encroaching on the right-of-way about two feet. This is not uncommon for us to have something like this. And this is the instrument in which we use to allow these things, where they provide insurance to us in the event there's any problems in the future, that they would be responsible for those things.
Great. Discussion? All right, thank you so much. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
And we have one ordinance for adoption. Mr. Holland, you have that one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 98, Article 8, artist setup area of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 98, Article 8, artist setup area of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, which regulates permits issued to local artists for the demonstration and sale of their original works of art in those areas of the City of Paducah, defined as the gazebo artist setup area or the Texaco Station artist setup area.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Harless.
Aye.
All right, we have several introductions of ordinances tonight. Commissioner Wilson has the first one.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, by finalizing the annexation of certain properties lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah and defining accurately the boundary of said properties to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves the final annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2901 and 2905 Lone Oak Road and at 2825 Maryland Street containing 1.922 acres, more or less.
Second.
Good evening. On January 24th, we appeared before the Commission with an intent to annex ordinance. After that intent annex ordinance was adopted, we went to the Planning Commission with a map amendment or zone change. A public hearing was held on February 5th, and the Planning Commission has made a positive recommendation to the City Commission on the zone change, which is next.
I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
No.
We don't vote on that.
Just kidding, we're not voting on that. Thank you, Sandra. Hey, we have another one on deck. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zone change from R1, low-density residential zone, to HBD Highway Business District for property located at 2901 and 2905 Lone Oak Road and 2825 Maryland Street, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby rezones properties located at 2901 and 2905 Lone Oak Road and 2825 Maryland Street from R1 to HBD, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to reflect such rezoning.
Second.
How can we rezone something that isn't annexed in yet? Or does that just happen back-to-back? Is that what we're doing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
One of the reasons for the intent annex ordinance, it allows the developer to go back to the Planning Commission, then to the City Commission for an actual designation of zone before final annexation.
Got it, thank you. We're not voting, guys. Moving on. Commissioner Holland?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Federal Materials Company LLC for sale to the City of its requirement of concrete-ready mix and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City accepts the bid of Federal Materials Company LLC for sale to the City of its requirements of concrete-ready mix for the remainder of 2017 and the calendar year 2018, ending December 31st, 2018, with a one-year option to renew, ending December 31st, 2019, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the following prices. Concrete, Class A concrete, cubic yards $93.50 per cubic yard. Class AA concrete, $96.50 per cubic yard. Class M concrete, $126.50 per cubic yard. Flowable fill, 1,000 PCIs, $80 per cubic yard. Flowable fill, $80 PCI, $77 per cubic yard.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor Commission, these are typical contracts that we have that is used within our Public Works Department for our annual, or excuse me, our needs for concrete-ready mix as we make repairs in your right-of-ways.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Bram Striping Company, Inc., for the City of Paducah's pavement marking program for the remaining portion of the 2017 calendar year and for the 2018 calendar year, ending December 31st, 2018. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Bram Striping Company, Inc., for the City of Paducah's pavement marking program for the remaining portion of the 2017 calendar year and for the 2018 calendar year, ending December 31st, 2018, at the unit prices listed below, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. Item number one, paint for each line, linear feet 25 cents. Number two, paint 12-inch stop lines, linear feet $2.50. Number three, paint 24-inch stop lines, linear feet $5. Number four, paint straight arrow each, $50. Five, paint turn arrow each, $50. Number six, paint combination arrow each, $100. Number seven, paint 8-inch crosswalks, linear feet $1.25. Number eight, paint school each, $125. Number nine, paint railroad crossings each, $500. Number 10, paint stop each, $200. Number 11, paint only each, $200. Number 12, paint handicap symbol each, $35. Number 13, paint 4-inch parking lot lines, linear feet 50 cents. Number 14, thermo 4-inch line, linear feet $1.25. Number 15, thermo 12-inch stop lines, linear feet $4.50. Number 16, thermo 24-inch stop lines and linear feet $9. Number 17, thermo straight arrow each, $100. Number 18, thermo turn arrow, $100 each. Number 19, thermo combination arrow each, $250. Number 20, thermo 8-inch crosswalks, linear feet $3. Number 21, thermo school each, $275. Number 22, thermo railroad crossings each, $500. Number 23, thermo stop each, $250. And number 24, thermo only each, $250.
Second.
That was the most exciting part of the entire meeting.
I mean, that is really interesting how much each one of those arrows cost.
You know, it really is.
Legitimately, that is an interesting information to have. $250 for each little arrow?
I apologize for your old habit to suffer through that.
I'm not kidding, I'm not being facetious.
No, no, I'm being serious, but, for example, the two materials are paint and what we call thermoplastic. And the thermoplastic is very permanent. It's melted into the pavement. It's not paint, it doesn't wear off. It's much more expensive for those, but those are things that we are for sure about on recently newly paved streets, but if we're going to be making adjustments or something in the near future, we don't want to use a lot of money for pavement markings. But basically, what Commissioner Wilson just read was all the pavement markings that we have in town that we could use at any given time.
Wow.
And when they have to be refreshed, this is what they cost to be refreshed.
So if we see some that need to be painted, can we just, you know, send you a note?
Uh-oh.
Yes, we can.
Well, we talked about one.
And now you know what the cost will be.
I know what the cost would be.
You're going to send a check from a personal bank account, too.
But, well, I think we talked about some places where, you know, it would just be so much easier if the people knew to go ahead and turn right instead of blocking everywhere.
Usually do it by contract, I'm sure, Rick. Yeah, and typically what we do, we do this as we pave streets, we come behind the paved streets. For example, Broadway, we had a long delay on Broadway because weather wasn't, you know, permissible to do so, but as we pave streets, we come right behind that with all of the markings for the traffic to follow and to help the motorists.
I have a question a constituent raised with me, and it reminds me because of the railroad crossing is the most expensive one. Who decides which railroad crossings get the arms?
The railroad owner.
Okay, so that's not...
The railroad owner plus the use of the road. For example, if it's a, say, a county road, like, there'll be, if you go out in the county, you'll see the crossbucks with the lights with no arms on them, but then also the volume of the traffic. So the higher the volume, then the more visibility you need, the more warning you need. For example, like Oliver Church Road, Kentucky Avenue, all of those have bars that drop down.
So it's the railroad owner that does that?
The railroad in combination with the volume of traffic.
Okay.
Great, okay. Exhilarating. Are we ready to move on? Are we good? Hey, that was very interesting. Okay, next up, Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Central Paving Company for rental and various equipment for the 2017, 2018 calendar years, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Danny Copenson for rental of various equipment for the 2017, 2018 calendar years and at the hourly rate listed below, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract has a one-year renewable option, ending December 31st, 2019, upon mutual agreement by the City and Danny Copensons. The hourly rate are as follows. Tractor scraper, hourly rate $100. Dump truck tandem axle, hourly rate $65. Dump truck triaxle, hourly rate $85. Excavator, hourly rate $175. Backhoe, hourly rate $100. Skid steer loader, hourly rate $100. Motor grader, hourly rate $125. Laboratory roller, small, hourly rate $80. Laboratory roller, large, hourly rate $100. Dozer, hourly rate $135. Dozer, large, hourly rate $175. Small paver with four-person crew, $200 an hour. Labor, $35 an hour. Landfill disposable fee, $270 hourly rate.
Commissioner, I think we may have, and City Clerk, maybe you checked me on this, as he was reading in the description above, he stated central paving, but actually...
Yeah, it's supposed to be Danny Copenson.
Yeah, and I thought that was, Commissioner, that's not your error, that's our...
That's mine.
It's supposed to be what?
It's supposed to be Danny Colt, but you read central paving in the description, but in the bid award, we're reading Danny Colt, so that's...
It says that in the ordinance, the actual ordinance, it says the correct.
I just wanted to clarify because we have folks that may be watching. I didn't want any confusion on that.
I saw that as soon as he said it, I was like, oh.
When I heard it, I'm like...
So Danny Copensons is the...
Danny Colt is the recommendation that's being put before you this evening, yes, ma'am.
Great. Did we get a second on that one?
Second.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. Okay, City Manager, you're up.
Thank you. Bids were open last week for the Noble Park on Phase 2, and although we only received two, I think we have one that's a pretty good bid. It's slightly over engineer's estimate, and combined with the projected cost of the engineering for the project, will probably be about $20,000 over budget. I've agreed to the requests by the Directors of Leisure Service and, as well as Public Works, to allow them to become resourceful and try to find that 20,000 from their operational budget. So I expect that next Tuesday night, we'll have that contract come before you with the recommendation to let that. So we're very happy about that and look forward to the completion of that project and all the benefits associated with it. Want to give you a heads up that on the 28th, we will have the proposed contract for the Stormwater Master Plan come before you for the first time, and there will be a fairly major presentation that night around it, made by Representatives of Strand and Associates. So we're busy preparing for that and look forward to that project getting underway. It's taken a little more time than we would have liked to get to this point, but it's been a fairly complicated effort to go through the process of selection of a consultant and also identify the scope. So we're excited about that. Work on the capital improvement plan is progressing to the point of where we are about to conduct the rating process for the various projects. I'm going to send you all out within the next day or so, a list of the 20 projects that we have, and will subject to the rating, and give you a little information about them. Many of them will be familiar from prior years. Obviously, we're focusing on some projects in the near term, others a little further down the road. We're working hard to identify a first phase for City Hall, and we will be engaging the Commission in that shortly. Also, the equipment upgrade project for 911. We are now looking at a two-phase approach to that, that hopefully will be more manageable while still meeting the needs and being cognizant of the potential for equipment to fail at some point, which is not something we obviously want to have happen or have to deal with. So that's a very critical project, so I mentioned those two as perhaps amongst the most immediate needs to find a way to proceed, at least in the first phase for both of them. I'd like Steve Irwin to briefly mention a hearing that's going to be before you next Tuesday night, and the purpose for it?
Yes, good evening. You may have noticed in today's paper, there was a notice of a public hearing. The borrowers, which is Allied Falconite Whittier Partnership LLC and a group called Allied Community Services Corporation, has requested a public hearing before the City Commission. The reason for that is, is they're requesting to borrow $35 million through a multifamily housing bond. Before they can do that, they have to hold a hearing with a local jurisdiction. At next Tuesday's meeting, there will be bond counsel here that will try to explain the entire process. At that meeting, I don't think we'll be asking you to make any decisions. I think it'll be just to take public comment. Additionally, sometime towards the end of this week, we'll have some type of white paper sent forward to you explaining a little bit more information on what's happening. But in general, this is some of the Falconite properties. There's eight properties total, complexes within the city, approximately 500 units which they're wanting to sell.
I would say that even though we were approached by legal counsel for the seller, I guess, some weeks ago.
Yes.
It's taken some time, quite frankly, to pull information together, and early conversation and conversations that we had, I think it's fair to say that we didn't get the information as complete as we thought we had. So the information that Steve sends out the next couple of days, I think, will be very pertinent, and again, you're not required to take action on that. That's not to say that you might not be requested to, but you're not required to. So that's important to know as well.
So, I have a question. So Allied Falconite is the seller, and the other company listed here, Allied Community Services Corporation, could be the buyer?
No, the borrower is Allied Falconite, along with Whittier Partnership and Allied Community Services.
But the properties are currently owned by...
Falconite.
Allied Falconite is a separate company?
Apparently, yes.
Okay. Is there any way we could find out about this next time before it goes in the paper?
Yeah. I was aware that there was going to be a public hearing notification. I wasn't aware that it was going to be put in today.
Thank you. Oh, I had a, are we moving on from the City Manager Report? I had a question.
We're not moving on yet.
Okay.
Can you wait? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Very much.
The only other thing I have, Mayor, is to request executive session, both for the purpose of collective bargaining and also personnel.
Okay. It's your turn.
I had a question about the Stormwater consulting. What's the scope of the project that consultants are coming to talk to us about?
I think, Rick, we can send the Commission out something that outlines that scope pretty completely, but essentially, it's a complete analysis that takes us up to the point of some prioritized recommended steps and also cost estimates for those.
So it's not necessarily that they're, because I had a constituent ask why there couldn't be sort of a design and build so that it's not consulting for what we need, and then having somebody come in and hire and bid for the building, but a more cost-saving, they could say, this is what you need, and this is how we would charge you to build it?
I think an important point about doing a plan of this size, which is the first time the City would have done this maybe ever, but certainly within the last 20 years, is to take a comprehensive look, an integrated look at the system and all of the components because of that relatedness, you know, the old knee bone is connected to the thigh bone kind of thing, and give us a complete picture of the system so that we can have an accurate conception of what the shortcomings are.
Because it's not just necessarily like a building situation, this is...
No, I mean, we could do a flashpoint, hotspot kind of thing, and we talked about that the prior Commission, but that's all that is, you know? And it doesn't necessarily add capacity to the system as much as it might relieve a problem in an isolated area, while that obviously would meet the satisfaction of some folks. It's not a comprehensive way to go about it. Rick, did I miss anything?
No, Jeff, you covered it pretty much, but to your point, in 1989, the City did have a study that focused on problem areas only and did not expand that to a comprehensive plan. That was in 89, that's almost 30 years ago now, and our system has aged another 30 years. So in...
Can I just mention one thing? I think an important point, forgive me, that because that's what we did, and oh, by the way, only about 25% of the identified things were addressed. Part of the reason for that, Commissioner Holland, is that we did not organize around it, did not set up structure, purpose, and everything, and so it was sort of easy to, okay, the hotspot ain't hot right now, so let's move on, or let's...
And we haven't done anything since that 1989 study.
So we are taking a look at this very comprehensively with the idea of setting up structure and system around it so that we take a responsible approach to it, put ourselves in a position to take a more responsible approach to it going forward.
So let me just clarify what you just said. In 1989, we did a study on the hotspots within our current system, and only about 25% of those hotspots were...
That's about right. Dollar-wise, in terms of the value of them.
Okay.
But to with your question, it's not simply stated, and I think when you're provided the packet, or we can get that to you earlier if we need to, as far as the task order, when you all start looking through the task order of what it's going to take to properly evaluate and do a comprehensive analysis of this, I think you'll gain an appreciation for that. And then having that as a prerequisite with the presentation that Strand will put on, I think you'll have a... I think you'll have a full understanding of the magnitude of the study.
And Strand is partnered with Bacon Farmer, working locally?
Yes, yes. Strand is partnered with Bacon Farmer, Bergman, locally.
I remember that there was a committee put together to analyze the proposals from the companies that bid on doing that study, so, I mean, it's a comprehensive approach.
And there will be at least two working groups going forward around this, and Strand kind of has their approach to that that's worked for them in other communities in terms of the public outreach and all that, and that's one of the things that we're asking Strand to address when they come forward on the 28th, so...
It's not done in isolation. It's done with a technical group as well as a citizens advisory group. That's, I guess, has an understanding that it's the, I guess, stakeholders, which are the citizens, as well as the technical folks, would be involved in that. But that is, again, a part of the presentation that they'll provide to you. They give you a sense of how this, the community will be involved.
This is going to be a major undertaking, I mean, both during the year of the planning and then going forward. And quite frankly, our expectation is that we would form a utility department around this, and we think there's enough there that needs to be done. Of course, it's going to be driven somewhat by the resources that are made available, and we've talked about that and been frank about the fact that part of the challenge is the fact that currently and historically, the city budget has not allocated significant dollars to Stormwater issues, if you will. And that if, as we expect, the plan is going to identify a number of deficiencies or also some opportunities to address some problems and add more capacity, it's going to take money. And that's the only way that improvements are going to happen unless it stops raining. But it's actually rains more.
I want to make sure, we kind of talked about this last time this came up, is this is not a Paducah problem. This is a nationwide infrastructure problem, and so we're not alone in this, and we know that, and I think that's nice to know, that it wasn't something that we did, it's just that our infrastructure's aging, and we've got to pay attention to it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Great. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys, so much. Any other comments from the commissioners? No? Okay, do we have any public comments filled out tonight? No? Okay. We have a motion for executive session. We are not going to adjourn until after the executive session, so we will come back to adjourn, and Commissioner Holland has that motion. I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Collective bargaining with public employees as permitted by KRS 61.810-1E. Issues which might lead to appointment dismissal or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.810-1F.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Motion carries. I forgot to do that part.